Okay, the time is seven oh six. We're all right for the vacation. Well, the guys, we come together as a group and committee to look out for the welfare of the community here as far as the EDC is legally bound to. We ask you, Lee, our thoughts are good steps and all our concerns to be of your will and not our own, and that we all like that what the community's best needs are, and that we act appropriately and accordingly. We thank you, we praise you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Praise allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic, which is ours, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start, Rob, there you go.
Lady Gregory.
Kathy O'Neil.
Who's Bethel going?
I'm ready.
Redbarson.
Jameson.
Allison's already. We don't have any citizens present, so I guess we have no citizens input related to the agenda. Oh, I do this every time, announcements first. I need to wear my glasses up here so I can see better announcements. We're having no movies in the park for March. I don't know whether we'll do April or not depending on the weather. There's a Chamber Luncheon, March twenty first at eleven forty five at the Chamber. We'd like to invite all our businesses to come too. And in April, the April Luncheon, we'll be hosting, the EDC will be hosting. We had talked about doing it either March or April, and someone signed up for March, so we'll do April.
We're doing the April Chamber?
April Chamber. And I would like as many of us as can break away and come to that, come to that. You know, and I think the EDC aren't put the cost of any of us to go with that, that meeting. Okay, we'll move along to no citizens input related to the agenda.
We have Easter coming up, March thirtieth.
Oh, yes, yes.
It's in March?
Yes.
Yes, it's early this year.
Easter is March thirty first.
Okay, and so there's, you want to tell about the Easter egg hunt?
It's going to be at noon on Saturday, March thirtieth. You know, there's usually a ton of eggs. We're going to get together, Rob and, I think she talked to Walkman Civic Club, and they're going to gather at the Chamber like we did last year and put everything into the eggs, all the candy. A lot of them we got last year that were donated already had candy in them, so it didn't take that long. But you can drop them off the police department, fire department, city hall, or the Chamber. And it'll start at noon.
And don't forget about the eclipse coming up.
When the eclipse is April eighth.
April eighth.
April eighth.
What was the date of the Easter egg hunt?
March thirtieth.
Thirtieth?
Correct. At noon.
And just so you know, it's sponsored by the fire department, the fire department auxiliary, and Walkman FD.
Walkman FD?
Yeah.
And it's really a nice thing, even though it only lasts five minutes.
Yeah.
They're quick with those eggs. And donations are very much appreciated for that because there's like three thousand kids that come here and we need candy for those eggs.
That's true.
Okay, any other announcements that y'all can think of? Okay, we'll move on. Consent agenda related, citizens input, no one's here. Then our consent agenda. A approval of minutes from February, there was no meeting in January, the bank statement, the profit and loss, and the vendor report.
You don't have to do it separately?
We don't have to do them separately. We can do them separately if we care to.
There's also questions on that case.
Okay.
On the bank statement, so we were supposed to get sixty thousand?
We won't get it in the beginning of the year. We'll get it in, we will get it in quarterly installments from the city. It's the way that works.
Okay, so this quarter, oh, yeah, it'll be sometime during.
Yeah.
Okay, so it'll be coming sometime.
Yeah, it will come.
Grants.
Very soon, very soon. We should be getting a deposit from the sales tax, yeah.
We budgeted twelve thousand in grants too, right? We budgeted twelve thousand dollars in grants?
That sounds right, but what do you do?
We have still time.
Okay.
I don't have anything else. You make a motion then?
Yep.
Can I?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda. That would be approval of minutes from February, the bank statement, profit and loss, and vendor report.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the only item I have under, actually, I think I may have the new agenda here. New business, take action on the playground cover. Do you have a different agenda than I do because I think I've got the old agenda.
That's what I have.
That's what I have here. Okay. What's yours got on it? The agenda for that one.
Well, that's different.
For silver.
That's, that's the one. Okay, I guess that's the one. I guess that's the one that goes. I thought I had two items of the new business, but I guess I only have one. Okay. Discuss and take action on the playground cover. Allison, you had some information on that.
Okay.
Yes, so there is a company called Adventure Shade Structures. They do the hip roof shades. Their products are sold here in, made in Houston. They have one that, and I did forget the paper, but what it would do is it's got the four posts, and then it is a material top, but it is ninety-eight percent UV protectant, and it is waterproof. It lasts, they guarantee it to even from fading for up to five years before it would even start to fade. And how it would be connected, you can either do an above ground or in the ground. And then for it to be attached to the structures, it has little levers at the top so that it can be quick released for whenever it does need replaced, or should, you know, severe weather come and they want to take it down so it doesn't get gone, then it's not hard for that to do either. It doesn't look like it's very hard. It looks pretty simple as far, and they can even come up and put it in for you. And the price that I was given for, I went out and pretty much figured out that it would be like a thirty by eighteen so that it could cover the whole, the swing sets and everything. And with a ten foot from the ground to the outer level, I'm sorry, outer of the, yeah, it's not what the interior would be, but ten foot from the bottom of the outside to the ground, and it was around, it was going to be about six thousand dollars, which I didn't think was.
And this is the size of the, you read that on anything?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and it's, I mean, they're pretty good sized posts. I can show y'all what they look like here.
Yeah, see.
So the one that I was looking at, that's more of a hexagon, but they have like these in the longer, right here.
So they go through down and then maybe some cement or something underneath?
Correct, yeah. If you choose to put it in the ground instead of above ground, then it would be cemented into the ground. And of course, I don't know if they would have them come out and do it, or the parks department would be doing that, but they explain it very easy. It's just to level the pole, make sure it's leveled, and that's pretty much it. Because they do have the little mechanism at the top that you just clip it onto the material topping and then just wind it to make it tight, and that's it.
How much you pay the guys this time to do it?
It did say on there, I'll have to see if I can click it in a minute for it to do that, but it was pretty much a tornado.
This is very similar to what they have out at the park in Quinlan.
Correct, yeah.
Yes, this is, yeah, this is a lot like what they have at Quinlan.
Now, they did have other tights, but I thought that that one would be the most.
So it would be as tall as, wouldn't it be cheaper?
Yes, because then, of course, they wouldn't have their mileage. I mean, you would just pay the shipping for the parts to get here, which, that, of course, is why they gave me a range between five thousand and six thousand, depending on if we had them come or if we had it shipped, so.
So ship would work on the grass before we do that, where, but the layered stuff over the grass for kids, and the grass is going through. They didn't prep it correctly when they put that down. I don't think we have to find new stuff, but.
I mean, really, if you got this in place first, it would help from having that regrowth too, because you wouldn't have the sunlight coming in.
I was just thinking that they need any equipment to get in there.
I don't think so. Those are just bags that they took in, but I don't know that.
It's a good question.
They can't take the things up and everything they're putting in there. Just tear up the whole thing. So what do you think they're going to do? Remove the grass and the weeds. How would they do that?
They shake the plastic down.
They should put plastic down.
It was not plastic.
From my understanding, they said they did put the plastic down.
They put, they put the lawn fabric down.
Oh, okay.
That's what they put down.
They would probably need to get a landscaping company.
And that was a pretty, that was about twenty thousand dollars with the stuff they put down in there. Hate to see that it hasn't been.
Or size of it. And I, so what I was looking at would be thirty by eighteen wide. Good. So it could cover even the swing sets so that they're not getting too hot for them to sit on doing this on their lawn.
And there's a warranty on that material?
Yes, there is a, I believe there comes in a five and ten year warranty.
Certainly, a lot of people use them yesterday.
People use it, they use it. It's a great place.
And it would cut back on cost to have to replace the equipment as well, because of course, the sun's not beating down on it and just causing it to rot. Let me see, it says, and it does come in, and I thought it would be perfect to have like the poles be the red and then the blue for the top for the.
That'd be pretty, right.
Theme of the catfish.
So we're going to approve this and then have it decide what we're going to do about the grounds first before we have them installed, or do we, do you know, are they installing it for this or are we?
That's what I was, it did, however you want, if they want, if you want to pay a little bit more and have them come up and do it, they will, can come up and install it, but it's basically just setting for poles.
There's nothing to it, I think.
Yeah. I mean, they're not small poles, but they're not to where men couldn't handle. It does show that they are, the uprights are three point five inch, three point five to twelve round. Or you can do the square, but I think the round would be fine. And the thickness is an eighth to a quarter inch thickness. The covers are three eighths square plate and welded top sleeves, galvanized tubing with wall thickness of twelve gauge. See, you wanted to know about the wind strength.
There's somebody in front of you. It's one thousand and then warranty, is they're warranting it?
Yes.
Should be, should be.
Yes, Scott, I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier. It's ninety-five percent wind loads. Wind loads up to ninety-five miles per hour with three second gusts up to a hundred and ten miles per hour. And the fabric is warranted for five years.
Yeah, apparently they'll take theirs down.
And the steelwork is warranted for the ten years.
I make a motion that we accept this bid, but check on doing landscaping first.
Second, I would like us to look at our budget a little bit. I'm talking about this.
We've spent a good money.
Yeah. We spent a lot of our budget this year already. And we'll have to make a decision whether we want to go outside of our budget to do bids, I think, because of, you know, it's a great project. But we're going to have to figure out exactly what we want to do.
Do we have any kind of list of other possible projects in the future that just haven't kind of gotten around to yet?
Well, this is March, and we have to go through October with the current budget. We, we spent a pretty good penny already because we've done the fire department, the police department, and the fat cats, and some other things this year, which is pretty good.
We spent thirty eight thousand, right? Out of the one hundred and three? Second page.
And then three. And then we also had the building we were working on, chief.
It still doesn't have. Right? So we budgeted for one hundred and three thousand, right? But we spent thirty eight, so it's less than half. So you're almost at half mark.
Fifty one five, like.
Yes, it's on, right here. Eleven eight one oh five additions to fix assets. This has additions to fix assets. Under business incentives?
Got you.
Or capital costs, I'm sorry.
I'm confused because our bank balance.
Well, we never use everything you have in the bank when you do a budget. You always have to. And we're lucky in that we, we're not like the city where we have loans out that we have to, that they have to cover. So we could actually take some out of the bank, but we have to have it as a motion on the floor to change the budget, to add to it.
Okay, because those things say what, what the bank budget says, and then we don't have the quarterly city money then.
Yeah.
Should be okay.
I just need a motion to do something to the budget. So I make a motion that we adjust our budget to cover the additional cost of, expense of the playground.
I second that. Thank you.
And I need an amount.
Well, let's just, so we know we're getting. Because they gave me at six thousand, but that would be not for them coming up here and before the shipping. The shipping shouldn't be more than enough. So should we say just seven and be.
And then if we did landscaping, what do you think?
I, I would suggest we go ten. If we're going to change the budget, let's put enough in there that we have money to do for, if we have to pay for the toll, if we have to pay for this.
Well, is there enough to do fifteen? Just so that we have for extra projects to either counter.
We, we could.
That way, you know.
We could.
If something, we get over there and there's a swing broke.
We could. Or something, just like what we may want to put in our buildings. Yeah, we could. Okay, that we alter that budget to, to increase fifteen thousand dollars for the cover for the playground and possible landscaping and perhaps another project.
Yes, second that.
Okay, so we have Elizabeth and Allison. Go in, see if I can get you to change.
I'm glad you said that, because I wasn't aware of that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and now we can go along to spending the money on, make a motion to spend the money.
I make a motion that we use those funds to pay for the park cover, to cover the playground and the possible.
Then.
Landscaping underneath the warning.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. See, I want to try to do as real as I can. All right, so, full business. We're going to go ahead and get to A and discuss information obtained about the grant to the West Walkman Fire Department, and I'm going to ask Allison to handle this for me.
Okay, so, to address the concerns that have recently been brought to our attention, particularly regarding the proceedings of the EDC meeting held on February fifth, twenty twenty-four, and the proposed allocation of twenty thousand grand for upgraded radio equipment for the volunteer fire department. First and foremost, I want to stress the significance of nurturing the trust within our community. Rest assured, we're fully committed to acknowledging your concerns and taking the requisite measures to uphold transparency, integrity, and accountability in our decision-making process. Your feedback is invaluable, and we sincerely appreciate your diligence in raising these matters with us. The outcome of looking into the matters of concern are as follows. Misrepresentation of dissolution of the EDC. It's imperative to clarify that in the event of dissolution of the West Walkman EDC, as per the Articles of Incorporation duly registered with the Secretary of State, all remaining funds and assets will be managed in strict compliance with applicable laws and regulations. Any residual funds or assets will be transferred to the city for them to satisfy the corporate debts and obligations. The assets after that would be allocated for exempt purposes as defined under Sections five oh one C three of the Internal Revenue Code. Should any assets remain unallocated, their disposition would be determined by a court of competent jurisdiction in the county where the principal office of the corporation is located. The second concern about conspiracy and preferential treatment. I wish to emphasize that the West Walkman EDC has previously extended grants to the West Walkman Police Department with the sole aim of enhancing community safety and bolstering business security. Our commitment lies in ensuring fairness and impartiality through all of our endeavors. We hope that this past example demonstrates our dedication to equitable treatment in our programs. Utilization of funds for community development. Our primary objective is to foster economic prosperity and to elevate the quality of life in West Walkman. Tonight's agenda did feature the project geared towards the, sorry, I had this heard before that, but yeah, so we did have the park playground cover and possible landscaping issue, or project to do. Then evaluation of future grant requests. To safeguard against any perceived misuse of funds and to ensure fairness, we will establish transparent criteria and guidelines for assessing grant requests from all organizations. In addressing the legality of the grant provided by the West Walkman EDC to the volunteer fire department, I also did a consultation with Carlton Schwab, CEO of TEDC, and it's noteworthy that while he holds reservations about the transaction, there are no explicit legal prohibitions against it, and it is strictly his opinion that it is not within the Sections of Local Government Code five oh one through five oh five, drawing his conclusion with the information he had on hand. He provided that ultimately is the West Walkman EDC's decision whether to fund the transaction or not. The same conversation was held with Russell Gallahan from the Secretary of State's office. He confirmed that there are no laws strictly prohibiting the EDC from providing the grant. He stated as long as the Board of EDC found the transaction to be consistent with the framework, then the transaction would not be an issue. As such, during the recorded meeting, discussion took place as to the reasons why the West Walkman EDC should provide the grant. The decision to allocate the grant was made within the ambit of Sections five oh one through five oh five of the Texas Local Government Code, which delineates the purposes and authority of entities such as the West Walkman EDC. Specific, more specifically, Sections five oh five point one zero two authorize the funding of projects aimed at promoting business development and public welfare, and in cities with populations under twenty thousand to fund projects that do not create or retain primary jobs. Several attorneys were also contacted before and after the meeting. All found the transactions to be within the laws as stated. I can also go over a couple of more, more specific laws. The Local Government Code five oh five point one five three provides that a type B EDC can provide land, building, equipment, facilities, and improvements found by the Board of Directors to be required or suitable for the promotion of development and expansion of affordable housing, which fire departments are pretty much needed for affordable housing. Land, Local Government Code five oh five point one five five, land, buildings, equipment, facilities, and improvements found by the Board of Directors to promote or develop new or expanded business enterprises that create or retain primary jobs, including to provide projects for public safety facilities, streets, roads, drainage-related improvements, demolition of existing structures, general municipality-owned improvements, any improvements or facilities related to projects described above, and any other projects that the Board of Directors in the Board's discretion determine promotes or develops new or expanded business practices. Then there is also, again, Local Government Code five oh five point one five eight for municipalities with populations of twenty thousand or less. They can provide land, buildings, equipment, facilities, expenditures, targeted infrastructure, and improvements found by the corporation's Board of Directors to promote new or expanded business development, as well as ones that do not create primary jobs. And to go over the concern that we are not allowed to provide for five oh one C threes. In our Articles of Incorporations that were signed and stamped by the Secretary of State, Articles four, purposes and limited, or limitations, subchapter A, the corporation is organized exclusively for charitable, religious, educational, and scientific purposes, including for such purposes the making of distributions to organizations that qualify as exempt organizations under Section five oh one C three of the Internal Revenue Code or any future tax code. The rationale behind the grant is founded on the belief that investing in emergency communication equipment for the volunteer fire department enhances the appeal of our community to businesses, potentially leads to lower insurance premiums, increased investments, job creation, and overall economic growth. The volunteer fire department plays an indirect role in economic development by providing cost-effective emergency services, bolstering community resilience, reducing insurance costs, offering training opportunities that lead to leadership and community services in the workforce, fostering community engagement, and safeguarding critical infrastructure. All these endeavors are well-aligned with the provisions outlined under Sections five oh one through five oh five of the Local Government Code for a type B EDC to be able to fund the grant for emergency communication equipment to the volunteer fire department. It is our hope that the citizens of West Walkman see that the WTEDC is committed to being transparent and values the concerns of the community. We apologize for any misunderstandings and hope that this clears up any concerns as to the legality of recent transactions. I also do have all of the communic. That was a lot. The communications between me and Carlton Schwab, as well as his statement that it was, the ending of our conversation ended with my opinion, your opinion, it's your money, you get to decide.
And we also have a letter from.
Oh, yes, and we do have the attorney, letters from the attorney as well, as well as the communications that I have with other attorneys. And all of this will be available as soon as it is approved from. And all of this will be available as soon as it is approved from a print by the City Council for the minutes.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's key, that's awesome, right.
Alrighty.
We'll see that, I'll see you then.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so we want to uh so we discussed that information, we're gonna go on to old business, part B. Discuss and take action on the EDC signup for the year. I think most of you have signed up for but I need to get Elizabeth and Larry in to sign up for the EDC membership and for the sales tax workshop as soon as possible.
Sure.
What I need you to do is name a day that you can meet me up here at City Hall, and then we'll go back and talk to our accounts representative back here and get you signed up. So just let me know when.
Whatever's, whatever's good for you, just just kinda let me know and we'll sneak in.
Okay, alright, I'll give you a call this week. Oh, and Larry, they also have um your sign
We're going to that school, right? You and I were supposed to be going.
When we, when we do have that Texas Economic Development thing, we're, we're all gonna load up in my vehicle and go, and I will post that there will be a quorum going to that training.
Yes.
Okay.
That's in Tyler.
And that's in Tyler.
And I'm not Sunday for that either.
It's I have my calendar, I'm sorry, but it's in April.
It is going to be.
The sales tax. Sales tax workshop.
Uh, April twenty sixth, it's a Friday.
Yeah.
What is it?
The sales tax workshop for the Texas Economic Development Corporation.
That's what we did last time.
Did you do it?
I did.
He did already.
Good job.
I've got you signed up for it, and Allison signed up for it, I've got me re-signed that for our email.
And then I need to
We need to get you too.
And then
And then we'll just load up my van and you can go.
As well as the um basic. Now, it is my understanding that that does not four per year, that's actually only four per board that can be, that can do that training, so.
On the basic?
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
On the basic.
Because I thought at first it was per year, but it's just per board.
Okay. So Kathy and I have done basic, I'm gonna get you in there for basic. And if anybody else wants to take the basic course, they just need to see and we talk about it. It's a week-long course, by the way. Okay.
To make a lot of people.
Yeah, it's really good networking and questions that you can ask, it's really good to help you understand some.
Where, where do they have that?
That one is
That's a week-long and, and I think the closest one this year is in Fort Worth.
It's in Fort Worth. Yeah, you drive back and forth or you just stay right there?
You stay.
You stay there. Okay.
Okay, but not all of us have to sign up for that one.
Okay.
All of us have to sign up for the day one.
Right.
But the, the week-long one, not all of us need to.
Right.
Okay. Um, so so the only action we need to take is just to get you all in there to get you signed up, the rest of us. Okay, so let's move on to see, discuss and take action on Business of the Month.
I would like to say that um Greeks Mechanicals, they really enjoyed doing that last month. And they said thank you for having it on the website, and they also linked it to their website, so.
Very good.
They were excited to do that.
That's awesome.
And they did get a, I did have it printed out on photo paper for their certificate, and we'll do that to, for all the Businesses of the Month.
Awesome. So, I think we had talked about doing the tire place this month.
Move tire place?
Yeah.
Yeah, I spoke to him, and he said, I didn't really know too much to probably explain the program, but I said I couldn't contact him since we had the next meeting.
Okay.
I can get ready and go up there if you want.
And we got two cars that are already.
Okay, good deal. Okay, so we're going to do the tire place. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to do the Quinlan Tire Shop that's actually in Westwakney. For this month's Business of the Month, and then I would also like to suggest, I've had a couple of people say that maybe the next one could be the donut shop because Snow Ranger Leader Hell, they're there. If it's, doesn't matter that five o'clock, they're there in the morning, they get their coffee, they're allowed to get to work.
Oh, they've got about ten cups too.
Yeah.
They're always forty every five.
Yeah, so, so we will get to them all, but yeah, yeah.
So I, I think it's great, we're gonna do the tire shop, well, we need to vote on it.
Yeah.
And then I think it would be good for doing that afterward, so you're making a motion.
I will make a motion to do the Ty, the Quinlan Tire Shop in Westwakney for this month's Business of the Month, and then to consider doing Billy's Donuts and Ten Cup for the next one.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, uh, discuss and take action on Highway thirteen hundred, Highway two seventy six. So I guess we'll just uh talk about what's going on with that and James. But she can't open it. So, this, I have this one too, please. That looks familiar. So.
So, so last, was it this week?
Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday. So last Thursday, we almost spent and met at this building.
Can we be post or not yet?
Yeah, we postponed it. So, came up with a few ideas, uh, one. And you know, we found out that the front door lock was not locking, and some of the other, you know, roll-up doors were not locking, so we fixed all of that. So we put a new lock on the front door, the roll-up doors, we, one of, you know, we locked them, we put a latch on it, so it's all working. So these are some of the ideas we have. So we are suggesting, this is only a suggestion, you know, we'll take the office area all the way up to the elevator, elevator section. The, the elevator section will be just for rent. The office areas, we have these ideas, we'll have one or two or three, three offices. And in the back, we will have an electric closet or breaker box, a janitor's closet, water heater, evaporators, things like that. And we build two restrooms, one for us and one for the rental. So this is just a suggestion, and in the front, we try to build something like what you see there. We went and saw that building too, you know, it's pretty impressive.
Very, very, yeah.
Extremely impressive, so the utilities in this building, the water line comes at the southeast corner of the building. Sewer is in the underground, in the west side of the building, so for out portion, you know, we'll have to install a new breaker box. And all new wiring needs to be installed for, can you hear me or not? All new wiring for um diating, um you know, and HBC and outlets and stuff like that. Then, once that is done, we'll order electric service, put a meter outside. So there is a cutout um between these two, you know, these sections. So they used to have um forklifts, you know, so they used to lift things up and put it on the upper, now that's what they were doing before. So I was, I'm suggesting maybe we just put a little deck, make it even flush with the, the ground, so that way they have full use of that space.
That's a good idea.
And that goes up to the, the rental area?
That'll be the rental area, so. And we're also suggesting to take out the roll-up doors on, on the lower section, put a door, regular three-foot door over there, so that way we have two exits, one in the front and one on the side.
Have we considered that somebody might want to do concessions though? Where they could just have like a swing that, after they have their roll-up door, they could just have like a swing out um pop, so they could do their concession stands for the park events and stuff?
And as far as that goes, when we were out there, I think what we were looking at in the original places, we didn't have any measurements either. But um with what they were looking at, having like no front office, then a couple offices in the back, it left no room for any type of public to be able to come in, you know what I mean? I think that's where the, the discussion changed, and whether or not we would have to move to that boundary past the, past the front of, of the garage door to the back if needed, and if it was decided that we needed enough space for some type of public venue.
Yeah.
Now, on top of that, and I didn't have enough time to turn around time, we were just there on Thursday, is it, these things are always great to start off with. My last four projects, if I ain't plug, plug it in furniture, I really don't have an idea for me. I gotta be able to see, I got four feet of walk space between the, you know, this chair and this table and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, I will have that done, I don't think we need to get a department or how, I, I don't want to wait a whole month to get like that plan to view, but I don't think we need to, or just say Carl, what kind of timeframe we're going in at?
Well.
Because the sooner I, we can decide about, about the layout, that we can start doing the electrical and the plumbing and everything else.
Here's, here's the deal. We'll need to get something more specific and the, and we'll have to have the group okay that specific plan before we hire anyone.
Okay.
So, um, I mean, this is good, this gives us an idea of what we want to work with, but we'll have to get, you know, more specific, like how many feet there are between legs and stuff like that, or we can actually do it. Anything.
We can definitely come up with that, but
I can have that done in like a week, because I don't know if you just want to wait a month for it.
Do y'all want to have a special session just to, to discuss the government?
Let me suggest something else, so this is just our ideas, right? So maybe we'll get some contractors to come in and just say, this is what we are planning, some ideas usually come up, come from those guys. So then we'll incorporate all of that and we'll come back to you with a price, we say, it looks like it's gonna cost so much. And these are the additional ideas, and this is, I think we should pick them or we not pick them. Then we'll come up with something more definitive with a, with a range of pricing, then we can say, okay, you can spend this much money, then we'll get it done.
Well, my also suggestion would be to start actually looking for who we're gonna have in there, so maybe they can have a little bit of input too. Like I know that if they're gonna have, if you want to rent out offices, then we need to start looking for people that are meeting in the offices or at least advertising that local half of the place available, that way we're not, you know.
This, this building right here. Right, right away. He rented, he, he's got, he's got it rented for fifteen a month.
Yeah.
On this building.
Yeah.
And uh what he, what he did, what he did here um was uh, my son-in-law is the builder and the, the head of the builders.
You should know that.
Huh? Yeah, he's the head of the builders.
Maybe we'll get, we'll get bids from him.
Well, I just thought, I was just gonna say, I'll have him come down and meet him and just uh talk with him and, and uh he could look it over, because he's the one who planned the, planned the uh, the thing.
I would suggest that if, if that was gonna be the case, that you would file the proper what, um, statements stating that there was
First of all, there's going to have to be three bids.
Yes.
Anything we do, and, and yes, we'll take bids from people we know if we can, they're in the local area preferably. Yeah, we have to do that. And it's good to know who's done something we like, so we get, can get ideas from them. But I cannot ever promise that that would be who we would use.
Oh, no, 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 no.
And if we did use them, we would definitely want a complicated interest statement on that. Okay.
So if you give us some more time, we'll, you know, uh, tighten this up, have a little better idea or ideas.
Oh yeah, I wanna, I mean, I gotta have a couple windows, all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, we know. Offices will have windows.
Yeah, and definitely, right now, it's just a brick building with no windows really to speak of. So definitely, plan for windows because
Offices will have windows, definitely.
Yeah, because we definitely need that.
There's not a whole, so really in my mind, there's really two different kind of layouts. You got your office buildings lined up on the left, on the left or right or back, either on the side or the back. We'll play around to the furniture, people looks best. But then, you know, gotta figure out the size and everything else, and really, so when I think about requirements, if somebody's giving me a requirement, right?
Oh, we also have to think about the disability.
It brings and so forth, and we're gonna talk to the fire department too, and see if we're gonna, if we're gonna, if we're gonna be able to get up to the public, whatever, to have some kind of venue or whatever, I don't know if they're
Well, even if not, even if it's offices, they still have to be ADA compliant.
Yes, definitely, you know, for us particularly, the ADA compliant.
Correct.
Uh, this particular door that's on this other building, I think would probably have to be a wider door on, on municipal tract building.
Right, so we'll share something different.
You know, with, with some air.
Because of ADA?
ADA. American Disability Act. Yes, thank you. I can get some of the words.
Yeah, we definitely want to make sure we're NIP code on everything in it will. And also, a source that you may want to go to, the code enforcement officer, because she has a listed businesses that are registered in
Yeah, we just wrote it down.
Any other discussion on that?
I would also, no, sorry. I was just going to point out that um it was a statement about how many businesses are actually in Westwakney now. And um, that's not this time, I'll say that later. Sorry.
There is a dog grooming place opening up down on two seventy six. She was supposed to be here tonight, but I'm sure she could go.
So we'd like to get that, and we do have some expense on that we want to come talk about, some property that they just got.
So once we have some more information, maybe we can have a special session or something just to cash it out, you know?
Okay. If, if you get something together, why don't you call me and then I'll get ahold of you know, see if we can schedule a special session. Any other discussion?
Try to do it to this bit, please.
On the building?
No. Uh, do we need to go into executive session to discuss any real property?
Or any other of the
Or any of the other things that we are allowed to go into executive session on? Anyone?
You can.
Okay. And we have no citizens?
Well, I'll just make one as a citizen.
Okay, as a citizen.
As a citizen, I just wanted to point out that there actually are still over seventy-one businesses here in Westwakney. I know it doesn't look that way because they're not all on the main road or storefronts, but there are seventy-one listed businesses still in Westwakney.
Wow, is that right? That's quite a bit.
Now that's, you know, some of them are running out of their homes or whatever, some of them are service jobs or um, you know, they provide services outside of the area, but yeah, there's still seventy-one listed businesses.
I wanted to just ask, I haven't heard anything anymore on that business that you were talking about before that was possibly coming, and I did
That's, would be discussed in executive session.
Oh, okay.
Do we need to do that? Do, do you want to go back to executive session to discuss it?
No, I just, I, I was just wondering, because I just haven't heard anything, and I was so interested. No, I'm just, I was just wondering, because I just haven't heard anything, and I was so interested.
We know, we know. Okay, we'll have more information.
Okay.
Okay, well then I guess we're down to number 13. Which one we adjourned?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank y'all for watching.
Take care, we got, be careful.
Okay, you too. We got lights tonight? We got light to distract.